Thank you, President DiNunzio. As you said, we have a robust presentation this evening, and it will be divided into three main sections. First, we'll hear about the state of COVID-19 in Yolo County from staff and Yolo County Public Health Officer Dr. Amy Sisson. We'll then receive an update about steps to return to campus and progress on development of our hybrid in-person instructional models. And finally, we'll provide information on other important instructional initiatives underway in DJUSD. We can have trustee discussion and questions after each section, and suggest we read public comment perhaps after the second part of the presentation, but up for trustee review. Next slide, please. "We all look forward to a time when we can greet all of our students back in our classrooms. Since March, we've been thinking purposefully and strategically, and our actions have been rooted in our values, specifically in the six principles that continue to guide our decision-making process and our work. I want to thank and acknowledge our teachers and staff who've had to reimagine education as we've known it over the last 10 months, and to our parents and other family members and friends who've had to put other parts of their lives on hold to support their child's learning. Thank you all. It continues to be important that we all do our part individually and collectively to reduce community spread. Our district is partnering with UC Davis and the City of Davis to promote Healthy Davis Together, and a program that provides free saliva COVID-19 testing for asymptomatic individuals is an important way to detect and combat the spread of the virus. It's free. It's real easy to get signed up. Two locations in town. We encourage everybody to participate. The best way we can now work to ensure the safety of our children and staff in our schools is to lower the community level of the spread. In the meantime, we remain in distance learning and continue to follow our roadmap to reopening that will be described in more detail tonight. Let me now pass the presentation to Associate Superintendent of Student Support Services Laura Juanitas, who will provide the most recent information about current health and safety conditions in our county.
Thank you, Dr. Boons. Good evening, trustees and student representatives. So I want to first talk about the graphic that the county has added to their dashboard, which summarizes the information for the state monitoring system. You can see that our adjusted case rate is 43.7 as of December 29. And the adjusted case rate-
Laura, can you adjust your mic? It's really hard to hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Better.
Thank you. The adjusted case rate is the seven-day average of new lab-confirmed COVID-19 cases per 100,000 residents. The seven-day average is rolling or moving, meaning that the dates used in the calculation change with each new day's data. Keep in mind, it must be less than eight to move into the red tier. The test positivity rate for late December was 13.2%, which is the seven-day average of positive lab-confirmed COVID-19 tests divided by the total number of tests. The graphic also illustrates that Yolo County will remain in the purple tier until at least January 19. And also, the stay-at-home order, which was slated to end December 31, has been extended indefinitely and will only be lifted when the greater Sacramento region shows a consistent ICU bed capacity of greater than 15%. So when looking at additional Yolo County data from January 7, we can see that we have had 8,970 cases in the county to date. When I reported three weeks ago, the number was 6,267 cases, which is a 43% increase in cases in the past three weeks. The test rate today was 11.9%. When looking at the number of cases for each date, you can also see that since mid-November, we have had many days with over 100 cases reported per day. I also want to share with you the infection data for DJUSD, which for December was 11 cases and at least 36 students testing positive. And I am going to apologize. We updated this data this afternoon, and this is the old slide. So I'm going to give you the new data, which is a little bit higher than this. So again, the new December data was 11 staff cases and 36 students testing positive or presumed positive for COVID-19. These cases, I want to say, are all self-reported, and although I feel confident that most staff inform us of a positive test result, we feel that only a fraction of students probably really notify us of positive tests, since many are in distance learning. Also, for many of the student cases, the physician presumes the student was positive without testing the student, so those cases do not show up in the health department numbers, which only shows lab-diagnosed positive tests. In our internal data, we actually count presumed positive cases for students as a positive, since we would still quarantine a student with a presumed case. So although the January numbers are still low, when it was earlier this week, had zero staff and zero students. I've updated that today. We actually have four staff that have tested positive this month, and we have 10 students that have tested positive. And also, this week, we began keeping separate data for students who are attending our cohorts, since if these students test positive, we would likely be quarantining the entire cohort. And to give you a little bit of a snapshot, this week, we have 12 students currently who are slated to attend our cohorts but are instead at home and quarantined for COVID-19. Next slide, please. And now I'd like to introduce Dr. Amy Sisson, who's the Yolo County Public Health Officer, who will speak about the current health situation and vaccine distribution plans in Yolo County. When she finishes her presentation, we'll have a period for questions for her before we continue with the staff presentation.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? Okay. Great. All right. I was asked to present on a few specific topics, so it might feel a little hodgepodgey. And then I added one of my own, which is a vaccine update, because I think it provides some important context, given the recent decision by the state to prioritize vaccination of school staff. But I'll start with the vaccine update, then review the governor's recent announcement of his Safe Schools for All Plan, discuss extracurricular activities, as well as say a few things about the new variant of coronavirus that is now circulating. So next slide. Starting with the vaccine update, I'm sure you're all well aware that the vaccination for COVID-19 has begun in Yolo County. We're currently in Phase 1A. I provided this slide just to give the overall context and reminder of what all the alphabet soup of phases and tiers corresponds to. So this is being used at the federal government, as well as at the state level. So the general vaccine rollout for COVID-19 is divided into three phases. Phase 1 is characterized by limited doses of vaccine. That is absolutely where we are currently at. And then Phase 2 is characterized by having enough vaccine supply to match the demand. And then in Phase 3, most of the people who want to be vaccinated have already been vaccinated and we're kind of going back and doing cleanup of anyone who may have missed an opportunity to get vaccinated the first time around and shifting back into more routine vaccinations. So while we're here in Phase 1, there are a few groups that have been prioritized for vaccination in Phase 1. It includes healthcare workers, essential workers, older individuals, and those with underlying conditions or disabilities. Compared with Phase 2, which is where the general population would be eligible for vaccination. And I'll now say a few more words about the subcategorizations within Phase 1, if you'd move to the next slide, please. So within Phase 1, there are three sub-phases, lettered A, B, and C. Just to provide the overall context, education staff are prioritized for vaccination in Phase 1B Tier 1 here in the middle of the slide. We're currently vaccinating in Yolo County in Phase 1A in our healthcare workers, long-term care residents. And we are hoping that we can finish Phase 1A in the relatively near future and move into Phase 1B. As I just noted, in Phase 1B, education staff are prioritized within Tier 1. There are two tiers within Phase 1B. So education staff would be amongst the first people vaccinated in Phase 1B, along with older adults and other frontline workers. And then, once we complete Phase 1B, we would move into 1C with other high-risk individuals, any essential worker categories that weren't covered in 1A and 1B. And then we would move on to the general population in Phase 2. Next slide. So a couple of things to keep in mind, especially as we start thinking about timeline of vaccine rollout. And I imagine, you know, the question that you're all wondering is, well, when will we get to Phase 1B Tier 1 so that our teachers and other school staff can get vaccinated? So a little bit more context. We're currently working with two vaccines that are both demonstrated to be safe and effective in Phase 3 clinical trials. They are both authorized by the FDA in December. It's the Pfizer product and the Moderna product. To date, Yolo County has received 4,550 first doses. So we talk about first doses, separate from second doses. Everyone receives a two-dose series, but the federal government holds back the second dose. So you can think of first doses as essentially the number of people that we can vaccinate with these allocations. So we've received 4,550 first doses. I actually should have updated this slide. We got some new numbers this afternoon, and it actually no longer looks like we have enough doses on hand to complete Phase 1A. One of the groups is larger than we anticipated. So scratch that, my apologies. One of the challenges about trying to figure out what the timeline is going to be for when we get to Phase 1B is we don't know from week to week at the county level how many doses of vaccine we're going to get. This is not the state's fault. It's coming from the manufacturers and the allocations by the federal government. It's hard to dissect the root cause of this problem, but what it ends up being is that we don't know from week to week how much vaccine we're going to get. Last week, we got one. The week before, we got 1,000 first doses. This week, we got 100 first doses. Next week, we're getting 200 first doses. No idea what I'm getting the week after that. When we get into Phase 1B, we're talking tens of thousands of people, and 100 and 200 doses is not going to move us very far into those much larger tiers. And then I just wanted to say a quick reminder. I know I mentioned this last time I presented to your board, but when we talk about vaccine, we're really talking about vaccine for adults. The Moderna product is only authorized for people 18 and older. The Pfizer product is authorized for 16 and older, so you do have some possibility of part of high school students being eligible for vaccination with either of these two vaccines. But in general, we're going to have to wait for the completion of clinical trials to prove safety and efficacy in the pediatric population before we can really seriously consider vaccinating students. Next slide, please. So I want to shift gears here and say a few things about the Governor's Safe Schools for All Plan that was announced by the governor last year, I can say, on December 30. The goal of this plan is to resume in-person instruction in TK through 12 safely this spring. The governor's plan has four main pillars. They include funding, safety, and mitigation, oversight and assistance, as well as transparency and accountability. This is not my plan. This is the governor's plan. I don't want to spend too much time here. This is publicly available information. But essentially, the administration is putting up $2 billion, which ends up being approximately $450 per public school student in California. We'll be offering resources to support testing, personal protective equipment, contact tracing, as well as vaccination, which I just spoke about, the prioritization in Phase 1B. There will also be technical assistance available from a state-level cross-agency team. And information about reopenings, which schools are reopened, how many cases are associated with those schools, will be posted on a public dashboard. This is tremendous progress. You'll recall from the last time I spoke there, there is no statewide dashboard, which makes it somewhat difficult to figure out how the school reopening experience in California has been going. Just going back to PPE, there will be free surgical masks provided for staff, and the masking requirements have been expanded from what was previously grades 3 and above. Now, all grades transitional kindergarten and up will be required to wear masks in the classroom. Next slide, please. I want to say a few things about the testing part of the governor's plan. The governor gave a press conference when he announced his plan that provided this table that I've screenshotted here about a testing cadence. That testing cadence is only required for schools that have accepted the funding that is being put forward through the Safe Schools for All program. Otherwise, schools can use a different testing cadence, and schools that are already open, if they are performing well in terms of cases, are allowed to continue with their existing cadence. Within this table of cadences, you can see that the frequency of testing of both students and staff depends on the blueprint tier that your county is assigned to. And then, in the purple tier in particular, it depends on your case rate. So there is sort of a new level. Some people might call it deep purple, but where the case rate is greater than 14 per 100,000. You'll recall that 7 per 100,000 is what lands you in the purple tier. I will say that the partnership that's being discussed between Davis Joint Unified School District and Healthy Davis Together for saliva-based PCR testing of students and staff puts your district in a unique situation when it comes to having free access to testing resources that would meet the state's standards. So I think if your district were to apply for this funding, you would be able to use the funding you receive for things other than testing, because you're receiving your very timely testing in terms of fast turnaround from Healthy Davis Together. So I think you are better positioned than many, if not any, other district in California. Next slide, please. A little bit more details on how this Safe Schools for All Plan will roll out. Originally, I believe, the state was planning on making some announcements this week around school reopening and providing additional guidance. I heard today that that timeline for release has been pushed back till next Tuesday, which is when the revised guidance from the California Department of Public Health is expected to be released. So stay tuned. There's much more detail to come. What has been shared up until this point is that the current waiver program for TK through 6 is being rebranded as a two-part COVID-19 safety plan. The first part will be what is required of Cal OSHA for all workplaces, and that's a COVID-19 prevention program. And then, the second part is a school checklist, which is really similar to what the current waiver application looks like. So as you're thinking about, if your district will pursue this, it would be helpful to look at the existing waiver application to get a sense of the types of questions and components that will be expected to be part of your plan. Another shift from the current waiver program is that the default for schools that submit a COVID safety plan to the state and the local health department is approval. And only if a district hears back about concerns from the local health department within five days, then those need to be remedied. But otherwise, if a district or school who submits a safety plan does not hear from the local health department within five days, their plan is considered approved. This was out of concern that some health departments were being seen as a bottleneck to reviewing and approving waiver applications. Another important change is expanded eligibility. So under the current waiver program, which will soon be the previous waiver program, transitional kindergarten through 6th grade could only reopen for in-person instruction when the case rate in that county was less than 14 per 100,000. That has been increased so that TK through 6 can reopen for in-person instruction in counties with a case rate as high as 28 per 100,000. That is based on evidence that many schools in California are safely open now with case rates significantly higher than 14 per 100,000. Grades 7 through 12 are still limited to the cohort guidance if the district had not already reopened prior to the county entering the purple tier. So no in-person instruction can be resumed for grades 7 through 12 in schools that had not already begun their in-person reopening. Next slide. I didn't want to get too into the weeds, but I imagine there's some in this audience who want to read more about the rationale behind the governor's plan, as well as the science. I've already provided these slides to Laura Juanitas, and she can make sure that they're circulated to your board, so you can follow those hyperlinks to the state's website to get more detail. I did want to provide, and I'm happy to answer specific questions about the rationale and the science, but essentially, there is growing evidence, both from the United States and from international studies, that schools, especially elementary schools, can reopen safely for in-person instruction if they use a layered approach to preventive measures that include masks, distancing, hand hygiene, screening, as well as testing. I provided an example here from Marin County. I'll just rewind for a second. You'll recall from my last presentation that it's hard to find data on school reopening in California. There is no comprehensive database. Some counties are publishing data. Some districts are publishing data. But you have to spend a fair amount of time poking around on individual websites. Marin County has more data, better data at the county level than most. And they also have more schools open for in-person instruction than most. So they have a pretty robust dataset. And this hyperlink will take you to their dashboard. And you can see that 95, which is 82% of their schools, have been open for in-person instruction beginning in September. And in that time period, there have only been six suspected in-school transmissions. At the same time, there have been a total of 72 positive students and 22 positive staff in those schools. But again, only six suspected cases of in-school transmission. So oftentimes, disease is imported from the community, but it's not necessarily being spread in the school setting when those precautions of masking, distancing, using stable cohorts, screening for symptoms, and testing are being utilized. Next slide. All right. So that's it for the Governor's Safe Schools for All Plan. And I want to transition into saying a few things about extracurricular activities, which is an area that the state has not put out a lot of guidance, except in the area of sports and a little bit for music. There is separate schools, or sorry, youth sports guidance that I've linked in this slide. The opportunities are relatively limited now that Yolo County is both in the purple tier as well as under a regional stay-at-home order. So essentially, only outdoor distance conditioning and training of youth in a stable cohort is permitted in the purple tier. But because we're under a regional stay-at-home order, the state has said that even those activities should be limited to your own household members. No competitions for youth sports are permitted in California until at least January 25. There was supposed to have been a review and an announcement earlier this week, but I haven't seen anything come out as to whether that date will be a go. But I think it's probably safe to assume, given that California is in the middle of its worst surge ever, that that date is probably going to be pushed back. But there is a table in the state's sports guidance that states which sports competitions can begin in which tier. And it's also that that is based on the risk level that's assigned to each sport. I would encourage you, if you're interested in the details there, to visit the state guidance. Music, originally, neither choir nor band were permitted at all out of concern of droplet spread. Those are, according to a CDPH Frequently Asked Questions document, those are permitted outdoors with distancing greater than six feet encouraged, because singing and wind instruments in particular can propel droplets further than the usual six feet. And then, finally, for other extracurricular activities that are not of the athletic or music variety, the state is basically silent. I think it would be reasonable for schools to employ the cohort guidance from the state, which allows up to 16 participants, a combination of adults and youth, in a stable group. And I think this is where this would become particularly challenging, is that participants should really only be in one cohort across all the activities that they're participating in. So when you start bringing students back for in-person instruction, they're in a cohort as part of their school day. And then, if they're in a different cohort as part of an extracurricular activity, they're in two cohorts, and you've basically merged your cohorts, and they're no longer separate groups. So that puts significant restraints on really all of these extracurricular activities. And hopefully, the state will be providing additional guidance moving forward. Next slide. I wanted to say a few things about the UK variant, which is also known as B.117 lineage. It was first detected in the United Kingdom much longer ago than I think most people realize, back in September, and is now the predominant strain in the United Kingdom. It's now been detected in at least 26 other countries, including the United States, where there have been cases detected in at least five states, including California. In California, we have at least 30 cases, the vast majority of which are in San Diego. And I was on a call with the state today where they indicated that there is evidence of local transmission in San Diego of that variant. And there have also been a couple of cases in San Bernardino. Tests in California are doing, or I'm sorry, labs in California are doing ongoing testing and surveillance for this variant. And UC Davis, they should be able to test for this variant in connection with Healthy Davis Together in the next few weeks. They're waiting for specific reagents to arrive to allow them to perform that test, but that will significantly expand the surveillance for this variant in the local area. Next slide. So there are multiple mutations that characterize this variant. One of them is this N.501Y, which increases the affinity of the- the affinity of the of the virus to to bind to the receptor that basically opens the door for it to enter a human cell. And as part of that, this is what the scientists think allow this variant to spread more easily between people. And so it's thought that this particular variant may be fifty percent more contagious or more transmissible than the the sort of standard COVID-19 strains. The good news, if there is any, is that there's no evidence that this variant causes more severe disease. And the experts still think that the existing vaccines will produce immunity to this variant as well as what are the the more predominant strains right now. But just, I I was asked to specifically provide some context on on the variant. So so there you have it, and I think that might be my last slide. Yes, so I'm going to to stop talking. Thank you for for your time and interest and turn it back to Laura for, I think, a question and answer period.
Yes, President DiNunzio, did you want to have trustee questions?
Yeah, I think now is a good time. First off, let me thank you, Dr. Sisson, for, you know, for your being here this evening and for all the work that you and your colleagues are doing to keep us safe. So I think we'll start with our student trustees and their questions, and then we'll go to our to our trustees. So Mr. Lee, Mr. Everly, do you have questions for Dr. Sisson?
I just have one. How would the vaccine distribution look like for our district? Do we have any sort of timeline for when the vaccines are going to be able to be available for us in particular?
Yeah, I'm not really able to provide a a timeline because I don't know how many doses we will receive. And therefore, I don't know how long it will take us to move through our existing Phase 1A and get into to 1B. In terms of how the vaccines will be distributed, we're still in the the planning phase for that. But what we currently have planned is a combination of staff going to the regular provider. We already have an extensive healthcare system in California and in Yolo County. And so we want to utilize the system that we already have. But we also recognize that not everybody has a medical home with a regular provider. And there will be a need for the county to provide vaccine clinics as well. And so we're looking at different models, potentially some some drive-through clinics, which could be on individual school or or district sites. So more than likely, we'll end up using a combination of of those two county organized as well as independent individual providers.
Thank you. Great, thank you, Mr. Lee. Ms. Ortega Nunez, questions for Dr. Sisson?
Yes, I do. Do you think in the future there will be a vaccine for younger kids developed or not?
Yes, I believe the clinical trials are enrolling children now to to test the existing vaccines in in younger individuals to make sure that they're safe and effective before they would be authorized for for use in the larger child population. But we we should be able to to have a a vaccine. It's just going to take several months to enroll and complete the clinical trials.
Great, thank you. I don't know if you can answer this, but I was wondering, I have heard some people say that they will not be taking the vaccine. I was wondering if it would be required to take it to return to school?
Yeah, we don't have any plans at this time at the the county level to to require vaccine. I think the the equal employment opportunity, I don't think it was the commission, but that that group weighed in recently that an individual employer has the right to mandate vaccine for their employees. The the county and I, as the health officer, don't have any plans to to mandate vaccine. I think at this point, the vaccine is under an emergency use authorization. It would be an overreach of of my authority to to require anyone to receive a a vaccine that is only authorized for emergency use and does not have full FDA approval. That being said, I think the vaccine is safe and effective, and I myself have received my first dose with minimal side effects.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ortega Nunez. So now we'll turn to trustee questions. So trustee Hyder, I'd like to start with you, please.
Sure, thank you. Um, thank you, Dr. Sisson, appreciate it. It was good to have you here in Davis, so we'll come back anytime. My first question is that on the Marin County report that you gave, was the eighty percent, eighty-two percent of schools TK to six, the eighty-two percent that are open, or was it overall?
I believe that, yeah, I believe that's overall. I I left their, I think I left their dashboard up. Maybe I did not. Oh, let me, I have the link, hang on a second. I I think I think that's at all levels. Oh, I'm clicking on the link in. It doesn't work. I I have it for reals here. That was the last presentation I gave, hang on, I really do have it. Where'd you go? There we go. Okay. Yeah, I think it doesn't specify. I believe it's all K through twelve. It gives, it does have a list of of all the schools and which ones, which ones are are open and which ones are not. But it doesn't, it doesn't break down cases by by school level.
Okay. And what tier is, or what color tier is Marin County in, do you know?
Uh, I, they are currently in the purple tier. They were one of the, they were a better performing county for a long time. They stayed in red longer than than many other counties before they did move to to purple. And and that is not, unfortunately, that's not reflected in their in their data in terms of what the case rates were when each school reopened. That would be useful data to have. And I think that's, that's why, again, a a comprehensive days dashboard really is necessary.
Yeah. So I guess, I guess that's what my, is leading to my question of just your view of the current transmission rate in the community. And it's, you know, we're trying to make decisions here, and there's, you know, certainly interests on both sides around caution and and moving forwards. I'm just, the the community spread rate and its effect on your, at least your opinion of, you know, of a of a micro community like a school, and and, you know, what level of influence do you recommend? Because this, this is quite a jump, right, on the twenty-eight per hundred thousand in comparison to what we've been dealing with with seven. So I'm just curious, like, what, you know, where do we bet, what variables do we balance?
Yeah, so so a couple of things there. First of all, let let me say that the, as as Laura showed in her slides, the the case rate in Yolo County right now is, I think, thirty-eight point five, thirty-eight something, which is well above the the twenty-eight that is is required for for K TK through six to be eligible to reopen for in-person instruction. So I don't think anyone is suggesting that, you know, schools should reopen right now.
Right.
While the the case rate is as high as it is. As we think about, I guess it is, it may be counterintuitive to think that you can have a case rate as high as twenty-eight per one hundred thousand in in the community and that you could be able to safely reopen for in-person instruction. I think there's, there's a few things at play here. One is we're not advocating for, or I I really, I should say, the the state, although I think I I agree with their their plan, and I think that the reasoning is sound. They're suggesting that TK through six and really starting with TK through two should open for in-person instruction. There's, there's a significant amount of of evidence that suggests that younger students are less likely to be infected with with COVID and that they're also less likely to to transmit. So that that is one piece why we want younger students back in the in the classroom or feel that younger students can more safely come back than than older students. And then also, younger students are the most likely to have difficulty learning remotely and therefore will benefit the most from in-person instruction. So it's actually, it's a, it's a good combination of they're at lower, lower risk of of infection, and they really would benefit the most from from being in the classroom. I will cite one example that is in the the state's sort of science brief for their their safe, safe schools for all. And they compared disease rates in elementary students to the community as well as disease rates in high school students to the the community. And they and they saw that, and this was, this was in France, so it was not in the United States. But they they saw in in a high school with a community prevalence of nine percent, so nine percent of of people in the community were infected, that they had forty-three percent of teachers and basically sixty percent of staff and forty percent of of students with with antibodies demonstrating that they had infection. In the same community, in their elementary schools, only nine percent of of students and seven percent of teachers had antibodies in in basically the the same community. So it was, it was much similar. So I think that is additional evidence for the the safety of of reopening for younger students in person, even when disease rates are relatively high in the community.
Now, that's interesting because, you know, sort of where my mind goes on bigger, on on the third component of concern around that age group is that's also where the most adults interact, parent-wise, you know, as a community, is on the campus of that particular age group. And so those aren't part of the the positivity rates that you just said. But it is, you know, it's a much more, you know, that's why I was asking about the effect of it on a micro community, because a an elementary campus truly is, you know, has a lot more interaction on it than, say, a junior high or high school.
Well, I I guess I would, I would sort of, I I don't think pushback is the is the right term, but maybe clarify a little bit that one of the advantages of an elementary campus is that placing students in stable cohorts is much simpler than on a junior high or a high school campus. So you have a natural cohort in a in a classroom on an elementary school. Students stay with the the same teacher all day long. They're not changing classes five or six times a day to different periods. So you really can have a group of, you know, fifteen to to, you know, twenty or or thirty students who only spend time with each other during the school day. They eat lunch separately, they have recess separately, they they never mix. I think it's it's much simpler to to have small, stable cohorts in an elementary school than you can in a junior high or high school. And I think that's also part of why it ends up being safer, and you have lower transmission rates in elementary campuses than you do in junior high and high school.
Yeah, understood. Okay, so another question. Is there any projections by Yolo on reaching the red tier? Just any projected dates?
Sorry, I laugh as the the idea of of red feels impossibly far away right now. I mean, our our case rate is is thirty-eight something, purple threshold is seven. So we would have to cut our case rate. Maybe the students can do quick math for me. But significantly, to to get down to to the red tier. So I I think, you know, for the foreseeable future, the the focus really should be on on planning for those elementary schools to to get open for in-person instruction because that will be allowed at at four times the the purple threshold versus seven through twelve, which will have to wait until we're in the red tier.
Yeah. So no, no projection that you guys are looking at with availability of vaccine and just sort of a natural decline of cases after the holidays, et cetera, that would move us close, at at least out of deep purple or something? I'm just asking.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, I don't think we've hit our our surge yet for for Christmas and and New Year. So I expect that we're going to have an increase in cases because of gatherings and and travel from Christmas and New Years. So things, I I hope that I'm wrong, and I don't have a crystal ball, but I anticipate that we will see an increase in case rates before we see a decrease. And therefore, it's it's quite difficult to to foresee when we might reach red.
Yeah, okay. Extracurriculars. It it so for, it was what you shared on and being able to do extracurriculars for a single, being a student in one cohort. Does that mean that for distant learners, because we're all distant right now, that clubs could could meet in the, with these guidelines, sixteen participants, et cetera, since they're not in another cohort, because we're not doing hybrid?
I think that that would be reasonable. The 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 piece that I didn't include here is is also that there's an encouragement that activities be done outdoors when when possible. And so I I should probably add that, add that into these slides before they're circulated. It's in the referenced cohort guidance. But again, the the state guidance is is silent on extracurricular activities outside of sports and music. But it seems to me that if a group of students can get together outdoor distance to to train for a sport, that they could also get together outdoors and distance to participate in it in a different type of activity.
Thank you. And then just my last one, is there any any data yet on what the acceptance rate has been with the vaccine so far, even though you're in more deep in healthcare? Like, is it ninety-five percent or is it less?
We have limited data at this point. I I do have some initial statistics from our rollout in skilled nursing facilities. And I'll say there's a significant difference between acceptance in residents and acceptance in staff. We we saw about ninety percent of of staff taking the vaccine, and I'm sorry, ninety percent of residents taking the vaccine. And again, these are the most vulnerable older adults with underlying medical conditions. And we only saw about fifty percent of the staff accepting the vaccine. So that that is concerning as we're we're trying to reach herd immunity levels. And when when you have healthcare workers not taking the the vaccine, it means we're we're going to have some challenges, I think, with acceptance in the general population. We're working to provide more information about the vaccine. And I also think that that some staff, you know, skilled nursing facility staff were some of the the first staff in the world, certainly in the United States, being offered the vaccine. And I think maybe they just wanted to wait and and see how how it performed in a larger population outside of the clinical trials to make sure that, to to wait for more, even more evidence of of safety and effectiveness. So my hunch is that a lot of the people who declined initially are going to become acceptors down the road as they they see just how well the vaccine is working and how safe it is, and hopefully seeing declines in the case rates and number of outbreaks in those facilities, and then also across the community.
Great. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Hyder. Trustee Dar, questions for Dr. Sisson?
Sure, thank you. Thank you for your presentation, I have some questions. Let's see, so looking at the presentation we saw earlier from Laura Juanitas, our case rate adjusted is at forty-three point seven, so putting us into the deep purple. Is that correct?
I thought we were at thirty-eight something. Yeah, we're Yeah, we're, uh, last week we were at forty three point seven, this week we're at thirty eight point five. But either way, we're in deep purple.
Sure, and then you said that you see the post holiday break and travel time likely pushing us into another surge of COVID cases. Is that correct?
That is correct. I hope I'm wrong, but every other holiday has has shown a surge in cases afterwards.
My social media feed would tell me that that seems a lot of people traveled that I was surprised. Okay, so as we look at the vaccine doses and and you talked about having forty five, yeah, forty five hundred K doses, first doses available to us. And kind of a trickle of first doses that you know of in the near future. And the high number of teachers and healthcare workers and get us into the. Tier one B portion to get all those people vaccinated with two doses. Is it really likely to be able to do that by the end of January? Or I mean, I guess it would have to be at least the middle of February to spread out the dates and probably even longer because of the slow trickle of doses?
So I I what I am anticipating is that we could begin phase one B sometime in January, probably late January. The duration of phase B, one B could be quite long. It really depends on on how fast the doses are are coming in. Even right now, I would be excited about getting a thousand doses a a week, considering that I've gotten one hundred and two hundred for the last couple of of weeks. But even at a thousand doses a a week, I'll I'll give you an an example. In phase one B, it includes people seventy five and up, tier one. That group in Yolo County, according to census figures, is twelve thousand people. We've probably vaccinated two thousand of them by vaccinating in our long term care facilities. That leaves ten thousand. If I'm getting a thousand doses a week, it's going to take ten weeks just to get through the seventy five and up population. So I have to hope that, one, my vaccine doses stop trickling in and start flooding in. And then, I I mean, I I think that that's really the only way that we're going to get through these phases in a in a timely manner. And even to get to one B, I need more doses coming in. Because we can't, we don't have enough doses on hand to finish one A. And another two hundred doses is not going to get me finished with one A next week. So it if production and distribution pick up at the at the national level. I think there's there there's hope for getting into and through one B. You know, with it within a few months. But if we're if we're staying at less than a thousand doses a week, it's going to take a long time. And again, just to be clear, these are outside the control of Yolo County. We receive an allocation from the state and the state receives an allocation from the federal government.
Sure, and and then there's going to be some logistics on being able to, if we do get a high amount, being able to get them out in some kind of logistical plan. To get them to a wide number of people, if that were to be the case.
Correct, we we are ramping up our staffing, recruiting volunteers, setting up for for what we call mass vaccination clinics. Oftentimes using a a drive through model so we can we can efficiently vaccinate a large number of of people in a short amount of time. But when you're talking two hundred and twenty thousand residents in in Yolo County, it still takes a long time to get to two hundred and twenty thousand, even if you're going fast.
Sure, sure, understandable. So you did touch on a bit about the the new variant. Was it the B one seventeen strain that we that so far appears to be more contagious? I had been doing some research and again, I'm not a doctor, just reading articles from other healthcare providers and other. The Lancet had some stuff out and it seems like it's, according to some some research, seventy percent more transmissible. And apparently children are getting it more than the than the first strain of COVID. So how does that factor into your thoughts and and our guidance on wanting to open our schools? Because that seems like a new wrinkle that's kind of, we were looking at one way of things and now it's a new wrinkle.
Yeah, I haven't seen the the data about the the new variants. Being, I mean, I assume it's more contagious in in everybody. Have you have you seen that children in particular, it's even even more transmissible?
In Britain, they're saying it's they're seeing higher numbers in young people under the age of twenty.
Yeah, so again, I I think we're still learning about this this new variant. And as as time passes and more studies are done, I think we'll have a better idea of the the significance of its emergence. Right now, it's not the predominant strain in in the US. But if it is, you know, significantly more transmissible than existing strains. It will spread quickly as we saw in the United Kingdom and become the predominant strain. But the the pace at which that that will happen and the significance of of that for for children, I think, are are yet to be determined.
Okay, so should people be able to get vaccinated? Is it likely that they could still transmit COVID or carry COVID to another person?
Yeah, so that is not known at this point. The we know that the vaccine, that the endpoint that was used in the clinical trials and what was studied is symptomatic disease. So we know for basically for both Pfizer and Moderna, they're between ninety four and ninety five percent effective. In reducing the incidence of symptomatic disease. They did not test whether, you know, someone could still be infected and transmit to to others. I think it's a a fairly reasonable assumption, but it has not been proven yet. And so that is why, as we're rolling out the vaccine, people who've been vaccinated are still in encouraged, required to wear masks to practice distancing. Just like the unvaccinated, while we're still figuring out the the impacts on on other endpoints. Like whether someone could still transmit to somebody else. I think it's unlikely, but we haven't proven it yet.
Okay, thank, and then as far as contract tracing, if if we were to consider opening up schools. I understand our our contract tracing is is a bit a work in progress, I guess. And a little bit slow in terms of finding out if there's a case and outbreaks and how quickly the information gets into the community so that we can kind of prevent spread. So what what are the, what's the plan to beef that up? Do we have a plan? Because something I would take in consideration about considering opening schools at any point where there's COVID in the community. Is that we need to have a really robust contract tracing system in place.
So I'm I'm not clear on who the who the we is in your in your question. I think as part of school reopening, there's a role for both the the county health department as well as individual school sites and districts in in contact tracing. So I think some of that question should should go back to the the district level in terms of what their plans are for for contact tracing. I know as part of the governor's reopening plan. They are enhancing the school portal for outbreak tracking or SPOT. Which is a a nice way for schools to report what we call line lists, a list of who's been infected and who's been exposed at at any given site to the county. In in general, the expectation is that a county, I'm sorry, that a school site will perform contact tracing within the school. But if there are contacts outside the school, then those would be transferred to the county to to do that that tracing. But for example, if there's a positive student in a classroom. The the school would be responsible for figuring out who has been in close contact with that student, telling them that they need to to quarantine. And then it would only be that student's family, close contacts outside the school that the county would do the contact tracing for. So so just wanted to provide that context that it's a it's a team effort between the the county and and a district or school site. When it comes to contact tracing in schools. And I will say, in the middle of a surge, this unprecedented surge, that the county's contact tracing program has been strained. As has every contact tracing program in in the country, certainly in California. Contact tracing really doesn't work effectively during a massive surge like we have. Primarily, one, because there's not enough staff to to keep up and we have to prioritize which cases are in the highest risk settings and focus on those. But also because there's so much disease in the community, a lot of people aren't getting tested. What we're finding is the tip of the iceberg. So we're doing investigations and tracing in those cases. But there's, you know, many more cases out there that aren't being identified. And so we aren't going to stop the spread by doing case investigation and contact tracing just in the known cases.
Sure, and then we were hearing before that many cases, the students, it's a presumptive case of COVID. So there's not an actual positive COVID case to tell us and we're assuming that student is is COVID positive. So so all the numbers that we're using are sort of what what we have, but they likely indicate that there's more out there in the community, is that not correct?
I think if anything, you're 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 counting more cases in schools than the county is. Because the the county is only reporting confirmed cases and it sounds like your district is is tracking presumed cases. Our preference would be that all presumed cases would become confirmed cases because they would receive a a test for for COVID nineteen. And and hopefully that will be, you know, possible moving forward that those those students and and staff who have symptoms. Or after an exposure that they would in in fact get tested and then the numbers would match.
And where where would people who have no health insurance or or low access to healthcare, where would they be getting those tests here in the county?
Yeah, there's there's numerous, there's there's numerous sites. If there, well, anyone who lives or works in the city of Davis can receive COVID testing with about a twenty four hour turnaround through the Healthy Davis Together site. So that would be the the best place to go for a Davis resident or employee. But there are numerous other free testing sites in Yolo County that are operated by either the county or the state. We have a five day a week testing site operated by Optum Serve in Woodland that's open Tuesday through Saturday. Next week, we'll be opening a new site in West Sacramento four days a week and in winters, one day a week. And then the county does rotating testing clinics in several of the smaller, more outlying areas. As I said, on a rotating basis, typically in the evenings. So there are many free testing sites in the county.
Thank you, I appreciate that information. I think people need to know that that's available to them, thank you, my questions are done.
Thank you, trustee Dara, trustee Asmussen, your questions for Dr. Sisson?
Thank you, Dr. Sisson, for taking the time to share all of this information with us today. We've really been interested in hearing about it. One of my things that I'm trying to understand is why are the guidelines for the public different than they are for schools? So for example, in December, gatherings with members of other households were prohibited. But at the same time, schools could have people from fifteen households inside for longer periods. So what causes the difference in those recommendations?
I I think it's that that education is, you know, fundamental. I won't just say essential, there's a lot of activities that that are essential, but it's foundational and and fundamental. So it's important that students can come into the classroom in a cohort setting to to learn. I wouldn't consider that a a gathering. So I don't know if you're referring specifically to extracurricular activities or to edu to to primary education in a cohort.
I'm referring to just people being together, right? So like, why could fifteen people be together in a classroom, but not fifteen people be together in a home?
Right, I I think fifteen people together in a in a classroom is fifteen people who are participating, again, in an activity. That is essential for their learning and socio emotional development. They are distancing, they are wearing masks. And they are, they have an enhanced ventilation. So I think those all combine to to make it feasible and relatively safe. For for students to, students and staff to to come together. They're not coming together for social reasons, they're coming together for educational purposes. So there's, there's a lot of harm done. You know, we we talk a lot about the virus, but we also need to think about the harms that are being caused to to children by missing out on in person learning.
So it's not necessarily that there's less health risk?
Correct, the there are still risks when you bring together people who live in multiple households into an indoor environment. But you can mitigate those risks by having them wear face coverings, by maintaining distancing, by doing testing, screening of of symptoms, having them in a stable cohort. You don't eliminate the risk, but you minimize it.
And in terms of the cohort, and you mentioned this a little bit before already, that this is much more difficult in the secondary level where people are in different cohorts and might be in different classes and seeing other students. But then we also in our elementary have students potentially in different, you know, with siblings or things like that. So it it almost feels like we're asking for this level of trust that you would, you know, that you would get from a pod, from a so called pod. You're you're asking everyone to take responsibility for everybody else in that grouping if we are opening the schools. Because you can't have a cohort of only necessarily your class, right? You're going to have siblings, you're going to have other classes. But that risk seems reasonable to you.
I I will say that schools have safely reopened in California using cohorts in addition to these other layered strategies. So, you know, cohorting alone is is any of these strategies alone is insufficient. But, you know, I don't know if you're familiar with this concept of a Swiss cheese model. But thinking about, you know, stacking slices of Swiss cheese and each of the slices of Swiss cheese has holes in slightly different locations. And so you you take one slice, it has it has some holes, that slice is cohorting. You take another slice with holes in a different location, you put it up right next to it, that second slice is masking. You add another slice for distancing, you add another one for screening. And before you know it, you have a solid block of cheese that can't be penetrated. So that is how we think about this layering on protections to protect students and staff in this school environment.
So I I guess if we were able to layer all of those protections, would we potentially be able to have that same level of protection again in a community? If like what I'm saying is, if I wore a mask and I had ventilation and I was able to distance, would I be able to have more people over to my home?
Potentially, but I I think it's of less importance than than having students and and staff in in a classroom. So I think that's why we're prioritizing, you know, making this, I I mean, I want everything in the community to to be safe as well. And we've been advocating for these these same practices of distancing and masking. And not going out if if you have symptoms in the community as as well. But I think it's all the more important to to make this happen in our schools. So that our children aren't missing out on the learning opportunities that happen in the classroom.
It's been suggested that in terms of ICU bed availability and staffing, this is actually comparable to a normal flu season. Can I just get your opinion on that?
I I am new as the the health officer in Yolo County, so I haven't been the Yolo County Health Officer in a regular flu season. Hospitals, you know, their capacity does vary throughout the year. It can be somewhat seasonal. So we've certainly seen hospitals be be full before. I think what's what's different about COVID nineteen right now is kind of the duration with which that that is happening. And also that it that it's happening everywhere. And that there aren't, there are so many staff out because of isolation and quarantine, because they themselves are are sick. That it it's harder to to find the staff that you might normally be able to to call upon during during a flu season to to staff additional beds. Right now, all of the the hospitals' surge plans are are built on having staff to staff these additional beds. And and right now, those staff don't exist and I think they probably would in a regular flu season, especially where a lot of your staff have been vaccinated. in a regular flu season, especially where a lot of your staff have been vaccinated. And so they themselves are staying healthy through the flu season. That's not what we're seeing with COVID nineteen. The workforce has been significantly hampered by the by and by infection. And and therefore, we are, we are very short-staffed in in hospitals across California.
Um, you said that educators are in tier one B. Does educators mean everybody that works in schools?
That is my understanding. It's education staff. It's not just teachers. So that would, that would be anyone who works on a on a school campus.
Um, and I want to make sure that I thank you because I have heard from some of our families that the work that the county has done in providing Spanish resources and those flyers have been really helpful and those have really been distributed out to many of our networks. But one of my concerns is that given that some of our most inneed populations are also our most at-risk populations, our community has essential workers who are hourly, and so they can't risk an exposure of having to quarantine for fourteen days. So then that would limit their ability to even consider choosing an in-person or cohort or a hybrid option. But it's also more difficult for them to find out if that, when they are going to be able to receive the vaccine, even though they might be in one of those earlier phases. So could you give me any information about how our Spanish-speaking families who may be essential workers would be informed and administered about the vaccine?
Do you mean who are school staff or in the in the community?
In the community with that have students in our schools.
I see. So we're, our Public Information Officer has has an entire communications campaign specific to the the COVID nineteen vaccine. And one of the important components is is outreach to both Spanish-speaking and Russian-speaking populations in in the county. We have specific funding that we are using to to target the media in in those in those languages, creating resources really specifically designed and and in the primary language. So so my hope is that we will be doing a good job of letting primary Spanish speakers and and members of the Latinx community know when it is their turn to to get vaccinated. That being said, a lot, um, a a fair amount of our outreach right now is through our through our COVID nineteen websites. But we will be bulking up our translated materials as well.
Thanks. I'm really glad to hear that. Um, I guess my last question is about the dosage and sort of any wait period. What is the differential between your risk factor after the first dose and then after the second dose and then any wait time is is any wait time required after that?
Yeah, so your maximum protection from the vaccine will be about two weeks after you've received your your second dose, when you've you've had a a full immune response. We we know that there is some protection afforded by the the first dose because when you look at the clinical trial results, you can already see a divergence between the the group that received the vaccine and the group that received the placebo starting fourteen days after the the first dose. But what you have to keep in mind is that none of those clinical trials had an arm where people only got one dose and then we followed them over time. So we really only have that very narrow window between when they got their first dose and their second dose, either three or four weeks later, to to figure out the effectiveness of that first dose. And this is why, you know, California and the United States aren't adopting the the strategy that's being used in the United Kingdom right now, which is to to delay the second dose and maximize the number of people getting first doses because we we don't have enough information about the level of immunity that you you have after just one dose and how long that would last. I I've seen numbers suggesting about fifty percent effectiveness after after one dose. But again, that's based on very limited data. So really, you're gonna be, you you'll have your maximal protection about two weeks after your second dose.
Thank you. I really appreciate all of the information. That is all my questions.
Thank you, trustee Asmussen. Trustee Adams, and thank you, Dr. Sisson, for handling all our questions. We are an inquisitive bunch.
You're a very curious group.
We are.
Yeah. Well, again, thank you and and welcome back. It's always great to have your expertise available to us and I just want to thank you and the county public health staff for the great job that they're doing, helping us manage this situation. I want to go back to the basics of you know, dealing with COVID. I was taught early on in the pandemic that it, your main issues are around testing, tracing and isolation. And I want to contrast what we can do now, what the governor's plan calls for, and if you can fill in anything that is happening in Marin County in terms of best practices around these issues. So one of the things, and this is more a question probably for Laura or Superintendent Oze, Laura Juanitas, Assistant Superintendent Juanitas. Um, in terms of testing, can we as a district require that students be tested?
Can you require the, oh, sorry, that wasn't for me. Go.
I was just gonna say, yeah, no, we cannot. That would take a change in California ed code for us to require it the way other immunizations are required. And as Dr. Sisson said, as long as we're in this period of emergency authorization, that's not going to happen. We'll have to wait till there's a lot more data, you know, maybe down the road. It'll become part of our regular immunization. We certainly are gonna highly encourage, even, you know, when it gets more widespread for our students sixteen and up. And obviously with staff the same, we're gonna very much encourage, do a lot of campaigning to get people vaccinated.
Right. So, Dr. Sisson, is the governor's plan gonna make that a requirement? Or is it just something that we have to wait and see when we get more?
I'm sorry, was was the question about whether the vaccine could be required or whether testing could be required?
Whether testing can be required.
Okay, um, testing, I, my understanding is if a if a school or a district accepts funding under this Safe Schools For For All, that they're required to follow the the testing cadences that were in the slide that I showed, which in the in the purple tier is either weekly or or every two weeks. In addition to the, you know, when you have symptoms, you you test the symptomatic student or staff and, you know, go go from there. Whether an individual student or staff member can be compelled to be to participate in that testing, the answer is is no without a court order. You know, as as the health officer, I can't mandate that that somebody be subjected to testing unless I have a court order, which, you know, I I have never done. But I, a school can exclude a student under the presumption of positivity. Let's say a student is symptomatic and refuses testing. That student can be presumed positive and excluded from the campus for their ten-day isolation period. Similarly, where that gets tricky is what do you do with the the exposed classmates? Because you don't have a a proven test. So do you make them quarantine or not? It, the whole system works much more smoothly when when everyone is is tested, especially when they're symptomatic. But I I think the the short answer is is no, you can't require an individual student or staff member to be tested. You can encourage them and explain the benefits of testing to to them as well as the school community.
And then do.
I was just gonna say, I'm sorry, I had vaccine on the brain. That's one reason why we wanted to as well bring testing to every one of our school sites so that we at least remove that barrier and make it as easy as possible so that we can get people tested on a weekly basis.
Right. So do we know if in Marin County, those success, that success there is based upon the extensive use of a lot of testing?
That is an excellent question to which I do not have an answer. I can, I can follow up with the the Marin County Health Officer. I don't know that they've had any more testing than than any other, any other district. But I will, I will find out. I can see where that would, that would be useful.
Yeah. So, um, but it, and I just want to clarify this a little bit more. If student, um, is exposed to COVID, say through a family member, do we have the the ability to say, no, that student cannot come on campus?
Yes, you you do, because that person is subject to a Yolo County blanket health officer order to quarantine. As a close household contact of a confirmed case, they would be considered a close contact and they're subject to the quarantine order, which confines them to their household for ten days after their last exposure. And therefore, they are not allowed to enter a school site.
Right. So one of the things that Assistant Superintendent Juanitas said earlier is when we're looking at DJUSD data of who has gotten, you know, COVID, that all that data is self-reported. Can we, as a district, or does the governor's plan give us the power to actually make reporting mandatory?
That is a question for your legal counsel. I don't, I have not seen the the plan in that level of detail to to be able to speak to that.
Okay, because, I mean, I ask, because people often point to Asian and European countries that the successful cases. And they do have these testing requirements and they do have these robust tracing systems, more robust than ours. And it it's also the isolation of known cases too seems to be a bit more vigilant in that. And it seems like one of the things we haven't done well is create a a nice coherent expressed system on all that. We've done a lot of good, shall we say, push out of information, but our legal requirements are not our our strength in terms of enforcing these is is more persuasive than, shall we say, mandatory. Is that a good way to think about it?
Uh, I I think that that may be true for reporting of of cases on a on a school, on a school site in terms of being reported to the school. I mean, certainly cases, uh, reporting to that to the health department is is mandated. But I I don't, I don't know where the the law falls on on school-based reporting. And again, I don't have the details of the governor's plan, but I would assume that if the the testing that is that is happening under this this plan is being funded by the district is happening on on a school site, that there would probably be some some level of data use agreement and and disclosure between the the laboratory and and the, at least the the school nursing or medical staff. So that that information would be reported to the school if it's a test result coming from the school-based testing. Again, I have not seen this in writing, so that's an assumption that I'm making, but it seems like a reasonable assumption.
Okay, and okay. You know, and and, you know, it, I'm sorry to be so pointed in some of these questions, but it seems getting down to these nitty-gritty questions and how, you know, what we can really do is is important. And one, one last question, can is that, well, you wouldn't, I I guess there's no statutory requirement that a parent tell us that, uh, whether they've been exposed to COVID? Is there?
Uh, again, I'm, I I think maybe Super Assistant Superintendent Juanitas would be a a better recipient of that question. I'm not familiar with the with the ed code.
Yeah, we've been talking to our legal counsel throughout this, and at this point, we can't mandate. But again, parents have been actually, especially ones where students are coming on campus, they have been very willing to share information with us. And even families that are fully in distance learning are sharing information with us. So I think that's how we're dealing with it is we're in this together and we have to share information to keep people safe, and I think that's been working well. That's also why our nurses call families personally anytime they get a report of even a probable case so they can provide education support and then also try to get as clear information on whether this was truly a positive test.
Right. So, um, Dr. Sisson, it seems to me maybe the lesson we're going to get from the Marin County situation is that there's a overall community desire to be forthright about issues of testing and tracing and and vigilance about isolation when there's a known case. It would seem like all that would have to be in place, or even if there isn't mandates, that there's a general community acceptance and obligation to do that.
Is that a question?
Well, rhetorical, right?
I'm just trying to figure out if I'm expected to say something. I'll just stay quiet.
But it it would seem that's probably in the end, there's no magic solution in Marin County. It's a collection of good practices, like you say, and that's how you get the Swiss cheese.
Yeah, exactly. It's it's a, uh, success comes from a layered approach.
Right. Okay, all right. All right. So the burden falls upon us to make sure that our community understands the best practices and and how to ensure the safety for all for all of us, that more so than than anything. I mean, the the vaccine will be great when it arrives, but up to that point, we have to do the set of best practices. Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. That's that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, trustee Adams. And I just have a couple of wrap-up questions, Dr. Sisson. First, again, on on behalf of the board and my colleagues, thank you for your time and attention. Your your candor and your insights are are so valuable to us and and we're we're really grateful. And grateful for all the work that the your colleagues are doing throughout the county. I know the governor's plan is not your plan, and I know he put it out there and, you know, the legislature still has to grapple with it and more details have to be provided. We've already talked about that a bit. I just want to go back to, you know, a lot of it kind of made sense to me, but one thing that, a couple of things that stood up, but one in particular was this twenty-eight per hundred thousand number, which is, you know, more than four times the prior demarcation of, you know, purple is bad. And and i- is there, to your knowledge, is there any science behind that? I mean, is there data? Is there something that says that that demarcation line, that twenty-eight out of a hundred thousand is a is a reasonable line?
Yeah, I I mean, I think it was a somewhat empirical number based on the the fact that the 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 group that was making those those decisions looked around at the time and and saw high case rates, uh, you know, kind of like Yolo County's right now in the in the thirties and and forties and seeing schools, especially elementary schools, that were open for in-person instruction and not experiencing in-school transmission, not experiencing outbreaks in the school setting. So there was a recognition that that fourteen was was probably overly conservative and it was going to keep some schools closed where the the benefit of in-person out instruction would actually outweigh the 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 risks. And so that's that's sort of how how twenty-eight was was decided upon is is my understanding.
Right. Okay, thank you. Second question just relates around, the data seems pretty clear on the differentiated impact of this pandemic on communities that have a higher level of families that are low income or that have people of color. And as you think about the governor's plan, it it seems, and again, I know it's not your plan, but it seems like it's treating all communities the same. And there were, I'm sure you've seen the letter from the six superintendents of this, six of the largest school districts in our state, including Sacramento, which is obviously not in Yolo County, but is in our backyard, you know, raising some some serious concerns, many of them around that issue. Do you have any thoughts about that and what you've seen in Yolo County and the disproportionate impact that's been happening here?
Yeah, I mean, we we've certainly seen a disproportionate impact in our less, less well, lower, lower income. and other sort of under-resourced populations. One of the, one of the data points that the the state publishes as part of its blueprint is, you know, the the testing positivity rate in the Health Equity Quartile, which is a composite, it's based on a composite healthy places index. Income is is one factor that that's taken into account in that index. We've, we've unfortunately seen the disparity grow as our case rates have gotten higher and our testing positivity rate has gone up. We're seeing a widening gap between that Health Equity Quartile and the rest of the county in terms of testing positivity. So certainly, there there are unfortunate disparities and inequities when it comes to to COVID-19 in in Yolo County, as there are across California. So we're we're not unique, but I I wish we were unique in not having them. One thing I will, I will say in terms of the the governor's plan, and it is light on details at this point. My my slideshow was also light on details so that it wouldn't be too long. There is, there is language in in what is available on the plan about increased funding being available in districts that that have greater need. And and I don't know exactly how that is being determined, but I think that that is an attempt to account and and account for and address the the disparities that are being seen in terms of disproportionate impacts on Black and Brown people in in particular. So I I I know that the governor, that equity is important to the to the governor's office. I haven't seen that that letter, so I I will go take take a look at it. But I think as long as, you know, the the resources really are proportionate to the the impact, proportionate to the disproportionate impact, then they they potentially could support equity. You know, I think, you know, sort of the the flip side of this is that it is the 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 students who are in those healthy places quartiles, who are in families with lower income that have the least access to reliable internet and technology supports and family supports to support their distance learning and are therefore losing out the most on not being in person. So I think you could, you could make the the opposite argument that if we want equity education-wise, which of course is is fundamental for for laying out the path for for a child's ultimate success is not just financially, but also their their health, is really, it it's even more important to to get them back in in school to to have more equity in the future.
Okay. Thank you for that, Dr. Sisson, for that explanation. A clarification, I may have misunderstood your comment about accessibility of testing. So am I correct in stating that the Healthy Davis Together testing is intended for families, people, Davis people, folks that are asymptomatic? But if if you have someone who's symptomatic, that 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 testing protocol is not appropriate? Is that correct?
I I thought I stopped myself before I said that. So originally, when the Mandavi Center opened for for testing for Healthy Davis Together, their their messaging was was quite clear that their saliva-based PCR test is is for asymptomatic people. That's the, it's a screening test. That's the population in which it's approved. However, I believe that they've backed away from that messaging. The the county has provided Healthy Davis Together with rapid antigen tests that they can use in symptomatic patients, so that if somebody who's symptomatic comes to a Healthy Davis Together testing site, they can receive a a rapid antigen test. If that, if they're asymptomatic, or yeah, if they're symptomatic, and then that test would would be confirmed by by PCR. But they can get, they can get a result within 15 minutes, actually. So that's, that's a collaboration between Healthy Davis Together and and the county to to allow them to to test both symptomatic and asymptomatic. So hopefully, they'll forgive me if if they haven't sort of shifted their messaging publicly yet. But that is my understanding of the of what is is of what is happening at that site.
Okay. Well, that's great news, and we'll obviously make sure that, you know, that all that's appropriate with them. But that is an incredible resource for our community and and, you know, our ability to to try to manage the pandemic. So just two last questions. So for public schools in Yolo County right now, am I correct in assuming that, you know, like we have small cohorts of students that are, you know, that that are highest need in classrooms? I believe there are a couple of other public school systems in our county that are doing that. Are there any school systems that have moved beyond that into, you know, K-6, broad-scale attendance in the classroom? Or any other kind of programs that you're aware of that, you know, that have been working with your office?
I do not believe so. Again, you'll have to forgive me for my my newness. But I I am not aware of of any districts that have opened beyond cohorts. There are private schools that have reopened under under waivers, but I I think that that is, that it, that is all that that's open at this point.
Okay, great. Thank you. You've been so patient. Just one last question. And I know, you know, I'll set the table to say, I know you don't have a crystal ball, because if you did, you would be done with this. You'd have figured it all out for us. But back to the question around vaccines, because that's, I think, for so many members of our community is is such an important, you know, factor. As we look at 1B, I think you said, but please don't let me mischaracterize, that, you know, that the the goal, you don't control source of the vaccines, you get what you get and you manage them as best you can. But that, you know, sometime this month, we're likely to be through all of the eligible 1A folks in our community. Is that a fair statement?
That's, that is, that is my hope. But it, again, as as you, as you correctly characterized my my earlier explanation, it it depends on the the number of doses that we receive from the state, because we do, we do still have a substantial population left to to vaccinate in in 1A. And, you know, it also depends on the uptake, because if we have a lot of folks who we've invited to to vaccinate who decline, then we'll be able to, our doses will stretch further. But right now, numbers-wise, assuming we get good uptake, we don't have enough vaccine on hand to finish 1A.
Okay, so it could well stretch into February.
It it could. I I sure hope that it does not, but I can't, I can't vaccinate unless I have doses in hand.
And so as we then move to 1B, which we're obviously, you know, grateful, and it's important for our healthcare workers to to get covered first. But as we move to 1B, where, you know, our teachers and staff, you know, begin to be eligible. You mentioned 1B includes the 75-plus, which could be as many as an additional 10,000 folks in that group. We have more than 1,000 teachers and staff at Davis-John Unified. When you add in, you know, Woodland and Washington Unified and the other school districts, I I don't have the number exactly, but I'm guessing you're probably looking at, you know, close to 5,000, you know, teachers and staff across all of those. So just those two groups alone are about 15,000, you know, people. You know, if we're
You also have food and food and ag workers and first responders in in tier one as well, just to expand it further.
I really don't want to be a negative Nellie, Dr. Sisson, but if you're getting a few hundred doses and, you know, you'd be thrilled with 1,000, you know, we we could be looking at multiple months before those folks get their vaccines, right? And then obviously, the 21-day period between the first and the second, and in theory, two more weeks, you know, or at least a few days to get through it after the second one, but, you know, for maximum impact, two weeks. So we could be looking at quite a long time for 1B.
Yes, and this is, this is why I hope that the vaccine starts flowing and instead of trickling.
Yeah, well, we all do. Well, I think that, oh, I don't know, Trustee Dara has a follow-up question, please.
I do. So I looked at your Marin County as you were talking, I looked at your Marin County example. And I don't know if you're aware that the majority of the public, well, actually, all the public schools in Marin County are open at less than 10%. And that several of their schools are still in remote learning. So the majority of schools that we're referring to that are doing in-person are private schools. So I don't know that it's quite a comparable population to what we're looking at as a school board here in Davis. So I think that's kind of an important consideration for those watching this meeting who maybe just see those numbers, they look really high and the transmission rate looks low. But when you start talking about private school populations, you are looking at generally more privileged population of families that are having to navigate through the the various cheese layers of of COVID protection.
Yeah, as as I said, the the numbers on the, on the, you know, upfront on the dashboard do not distinguish between between public and and private, although you can look at the map of schools. So I I would encourage, as you've done, to to dig more deeply in into that data to to see if it is in fact generalizable. I know that, you know, certainly, there are there are public schools, many of those, many of the schools that are listed there are public schools, and they are at least in part open for in-person instruction. So I I think there's a, there's a, there's a certain amount of of applicability to to the public school setting.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, trustees, if we don't have any other questions for Dr. Sisson, I want to thank you so much again for your time. We are really grateful, and we are so fortunate to have you in our district, and we appreciate everything that you do for us. So I think Superintendent Bose, unless we have anything else for Dr. Sisson, we can, I'm sure she's had a wee bit of a busy day.
Thank you, Dr. Sisson. We sure appreciate it. And let me ask Associate Superintendent Laura Juanitas to pick up the presentation and describe where we are in our phased return to campus plan.
Dr. Bose, before we do that, I would like to suggest, since, you know, obviously, we started closed at 4:00 and we've been going for close to three hours here, in in support of my colleagues who might need a five-minute recess to attend to things that might require a five-minute recess, I suggest that we take a five-minute recess and return at 9:20. Right, Dr. Bose, I think we're back with a quorum.
Very good.
Oh, is trustee Dara here? Sorry. Nope, not yet. There she is.
All right. Thanks, everyone, and let's have Laura pick up the presentation from here.
Okay, thank you. So currently, we're continuing with Phase 2 of our Return to Campus Plan, which includes a partial return of students with urgent needs. We can continue to have small cohorts of students on campus regardless of being in the purple tier and regardless of being under a stay-at-home order. But in order to move to Phase 3, which would bring all students back to campus, the county needs to be back in the red tier. Or, as Dr. Sisson talked about, we have to meet that revised waiver process for elementary. Next slide, please. So I'd like to give you a recap of our progress with bringing students back to campus as part of our Phase 2 plan. So in mid-October, we moved into Phase 2. We began with Step 1, which brought students back for in-person special education assessments. The focus was on new and triennial assessments, which must be done in person. And as of this week, we have fully completed 67 assessments, and we are in process with 118 more. Also, in October, we began providing in-person special education services for students with the most urgent needs. And for those students who And for those students who were unable to adequately receive those students in a virtual, those services in a virtual format. In general, students come once a week. And prior to winter break, we had eight providers servicing 34 students on campus each week. But with the recent increase in cases, our physical therapy staff, who are contract employees with the district, they've been instructed by their employer to stop seeing students in person. So our students receiving physical therapy will continue to get their services, but it'll be back in a virtual format. We're also continuing with our small cohorts, which started back up after winter break this past Tuesday, January 5. On Monday, district nurses and site staff called all the parents of students in the cohorts to assess the student and families for illness. Ten students were identified as either having tested positive for COVID or having been in close contact with a positive COVID person in the household over winter break. Those students are going to remain home and quarantine for the required 14-day period. In addition, we had to close a cohort this week because a student who came to school on Tuesday is presumed positive. Family members in the household are positive for COVID-19. The staff and the other students in the cohort were notified of that exposure Tuesday night and have been advised to get tested and quarantined for 14 days. That cohort will reopen on January 20. The situation illustrates that even when we do daily health screenings and make phone calls home, there will still be situations where we have exposures on campus. I'd like to also give an update on the status of facilities work in preparation of a wider return of students to campus. So all HVAC units have been retrofitted with MERV 13 filters. We also have on hand additional hand washing stations on campus and we have a large number of disinfectant sprayers, which would allow us to clean a room quickly. We have C crates installed on every campus to be used for additional storage of furniture, since we'll be moving furniture out of classrooms to enable the six-foot distance between desks. We also have on hand a great deal of signage, PPE supplies for staff and students, and cleaning supplies. Once we determine the hybrid model, we'll begin to work, actually going into classrooms, getting them set up for a return of students. And as was talked about earlier, we're working in partnership with UC Davis and Healthy Davis together to bring saliva testing to all DJUSD campuses. We're starting a pilot project at four sites the week of January 19. Those sites are going to be Valley Oak, Montgomery Elementary, Patwin Elementary, and Harper Junior High. The goal is to test all staff and students on those campuses at least once a week. And our plan is to scale up testing to all DJUSD campuses within the next six weeks. And now I'll turn the presentation over to Associate Superintendent Roddy Boonchey.
Thank you, Laura. Good evening, trustees. Here's a brief update on where we are in our planning for a hybrid model return to school and what we call our roadmap to Phase Three. We've moved steadily through this five-stage strategy since its launch on November 19. The stages include data collection through stakeholder surveys, development of reopening criteria, action team model creation, model selection, and finally reopening actions. This work, of course, continues to be influenced by variables outside of our control, particularly as they relate to current infection rates and changes in policy. The most important aspect of this roadmap strategy is that it's an inclusive, transparent, and methodical process, which is particularly important so that we all understand the benefits, challenges, and trade-offs of the outcome. Following the staff and family surveys, our superintendents' advisories convened to draft reopening criteria, which are comprehensive and are now being used to evaluate the hybrid model. We know there will be strengths and limitations to the model we ultimately select. And our shared evaluation of the model through this tool will guide our efforts to mitigate the challenges. Here's a brief snapshot of the hybrid evaluation rubric, which was attached in the December 17 Board Agenda. Again, much of the content was generated by the 77 participants of the superintendents' advisories and included representatives of parents, certificated staff, classified staff, special ed, climate, D-LAC, DTAC, students, and more. It's a five-page assessment tool organized by the five categories you see listed on the left, which include health and safety, efficacy of instruction, social-emotional learning, equity and access, and structural compatibility and continuity. We will provide an overview of how our stakeholders assess the recommended model against criteria in these categories at our next meeting on January 21. Much of the heavy lifting, including the vetting, development, and refining of reopening models, has been conducted by a DJUSD action team made up of well over 100 staff who represent a broad range of roles in our district. We convened three intensive meetings, including focus breakouts to discuss, draft, and synthesize best ideas. The final action team meeting occurred yesterday with their evaluation and feedback on the elementary and secondary draft. The work of the staff action team has been productive and we have been intentional about creating a culture of collaboration, problem-solving, and innovation, critical competencies that we have relied on to navigate this pandemic. At our December 16 meeting, which focused on synthesizing a series of first draft models into fewer final contenders, we opened the discussion with a prompt. How would you like to demonstrate collaboration with your peers in this work today? And you can see in this word cloud the spirit of our team and how we have committed to work together, which is particularly heartening, given the high stakes of the work that we're doing. The second screenshot you see there is the planning document for the completed second drafts of elementary and secondary models and the teams that designed them. Following the December 16 meeting, we compiled all the data and work, including survey insights from November, qualitative feedback, each of the 23 action team model drafts, and individual polling of the action team members, which gives us a sense of trends on specific features from everyone's individual perspectives. And we conducted a final synthesis to develop one elementary and one secondary model draft. The screenshot on the right is how we affinity mapped each of the action team drafts, meaning we identified key features of each draft on a spreadsheet and highlighted cross-cutting themes, which were then cross-referenced with polling, and you see that on the left, a process by which we were able to model a final draft. We are now in the process of taking the final drafts, one for elementary and one for secondary, through a review and evaluation all of this week and into next week. You can see the stakeholder groups and dates of their review here. And this is where the importance of the rubric comes into play, as it provides a third point of reference for analysis, identifies areas for refinement, and helps build understanding among these groups of the complexities and implications that will come with a hybrid model. Our next meeting is with all advisories next Wednesday, January 13, where we will conduct and discuss the assessment. And I also want to add that following each of these stakeholder convenings, we take that feedback and make revisions. So we're constantly developing on iterations of that final draft based on the feedback we get from diverse stakeholder roles. And then at our next board meeting on January 21, two weeks from now, we will bring a final recommendation for an elementary and secondary hybrid model before you, including an analysis of their strengths and weaknesses, our plans to mitigate to the extent possible, and importantly, a discussion of how additional variables may impact these plans. And then when conditions are right, families will be asked to select between attendance in the hybrid model, that was approved by the board, or a distance learning option. And then the final step before any staff and students return includes the many logistical and technical actions to support the in-person model. We will need to contend with staff and student reassignments, ensuring safety measures are in place, negotiations, training, and tech and instructional supports. All the while, being acutely aware of the variables outside of our control, like infection rates, shifting policies, developments with regional LEAs, and employee agreements that may affect the direction of this work. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Bose.
Thank you, Dr. Boonchey. We've heard from Dr. Sisson and staff and come to a point, if we want to hear from any trustee discussion and public comment. And we have quite a lot of public comment, so I think important also that we discuss how we would like to handle that.
And please let us know, how much, how many emails do we have, Dr. Bose?
Sure, so we have 35 public comment emails. We, you know, are also intending to have a discussion about conditions for reopening schools. Do we want to hear a public comment first and then have that discussion?
Colleagues, what say of you? Would you prefer to hear a public comment now and then go to the conditions discussion or wait for public comment?
It seems like we can go into our discussion and then read the public comment. But it's, I mean, whatever the rest of the board wants to do.
Yeah, generally, the model is presentation, public comment, board discussion.
Yeah.
The difference here, trustee Dar, being is, you know, do we read public comment now and then have an additional, there's an additional presentation from the district? Or do we wait and have that and then, and then have public comment? I'm certainly open to what my colleagues prefer. I have no problem doing public comment now. Obviously, we've all had the opportunity to read virtually all of them. I know some have come in during the meeting, but, you know, I guess the question, colleagues, is 35 emails is, you know, probably, we have a three-minute limit. I know some are not long, but we're, you know, I would say on average, they're probably two minutes. So it's probably about 70 plus or minus minutes of a public comment. So we have the option to listen to all of them, you know, or, you know, our board policy enables us to, you know, to pick a time, a maximum amount of time for a particular topic as well.
So what was the time, what was the protocol we set last time? It was, it was, was it 60 minutes? I can't really remember what we had said.
I believe it was 30 minutes.
30 minutes, 30 minutes.
Yeah, I think that was a soft 30 minutes, Superintendent Bose. I think we went a little more than, a little more than 30, but yes. And I think the meeting you're referring to, there was one meeting where we did go, you know, close to an hour. We just decided to read all of them. I think there were plus or minus 20 at that meeting. Yeah, I mean, I, I'm, again, I'm open to, I don't know that we need to do a vote on this, but sort of what the, what the will of my colleagues is.
I'm in support of hearing the thoughts, the opportunity for them to have their voice, but I was just wondering if it would be more effective to have the two, all the presentations done and then have the public comment.
Sure, we could pick up the initiatives presentation right away, get through that pretty quickly, then proceed to public comment.
Okay, colleagues, does that work for everybody? Thumbs up? Okay. We'll call that a soft majority. Proceed, Superintendent Bose.
All right, well, in addition to the attention placed on the pandemic response, we also remain focused on our long-term planning and important initiatives. Even in this time of distance learning, DJUSD has continued to design and develop a number of meaningful programs and initiatives to better our schools and opportunities for students. And it's a credit to the professionalism, resilience, and dedication of our administrators, teachers, and support staff, who are the reason we're able to meet the needs of the current moment and prepare ourselves for a return to campus when conditions are right and for future years ahead. Let me turn this over to Dr. Roddy Boonchey.
I think Deputy Superintendent Matt Best is.
I am sorry, we're starting with facilities and.
Quite all right. So I've got the good news of the evening in that we are really cooking on the BON program. We have several projects which are in the approval and have either been approved or have been submitted to the Division of State Architect. The Birch Lane NPR project has been approved and will likely break ground this spring. Chavez, North Davis, Willett, NPRs have all been submitted to the Division of State Architect, as has the Da Vinci High School Tech Hub. We have contractors selected for all of the NPR projects. It's actually the same contractor, which we anticipate bringing significant savings to the program across those projects. And we've also selected a contractor for the Da Vinci High School Tech Hub. And we are well underway in construction on the Early Learning Center at Korematsu. If you haven't been by there, you should do that soon. We will have buildings out of the ground in the next week and a half or so. And the Emerson Da Vinci Junior High School Science Lab has an impressive pile of dirt in front of it currently, which represents the very large holes being dug for the site work. But those holes will soon be filled and we should be coming out of the ground here in another couple, another couple months. So with that, I will turn it over.
And I too have good news. And regardless of all the hard work we're putting into navigating reopening plans, we also are managing quite a bit of other instructional initiatives. Since the overhaul of our Career Technical Education Program in 2019, we have focused with much intentionality on bringing ethnic studies to our students. In brief, the backdrop for this initiative includes the work of We All Belong Initiative of 2017, which was our district's commitment to social justice and inclusivity, alignment to the competencies of our graduate profile, which is our vision for 21st century programs and pedagogy, and all of this in the context of state efforts to promote ethnic studies in California's public education system. Our inspiration and why for this work is based on the belief that all students, particularly our students from communities of color, communities that have been marginalized and oppressed, should be reflected and celebrated in our schools. We believe that all students thrive when they can be their whole selves, own their identities, and have agency to be leaders of social justice. And we believe such learning experiences are positive and impactful for every one of our students in DJUSD. To achieve this vision, we have spent the last two years leading and engaging our students and staff and community in this work, conducting research, aligning with state ethnic studies initiatives, bringing in experts, providing professional development. And we have just launched piloting of this work across the district, which will inform a program recommendation later this year. Here's a snapshot of our professional development activities for this year, which includes two parallel tracks. The first is a series led by Acosta Educational Partners out of Tucson and Napa and is focused on pedagogy and practice and knowledge of self as an ethnic studies teacher. We had our first session prior to break and it was powerful and unifying for all of us that were able to attend. The second track includes a scholar series coordinated by the UC Davis History Project to have expert faculty and practitioners share their experiences with ethnic studies teaching and learning. And all of these workshops are planned around dates for the Ethnic Studies Task Force to meet and collaborate during this year of piloting. And by the way, we have our next Ethnic Studies Task Force meeting next Thursday. At the same time, and fortunately, so, next slide, because of its alignment with ethnic studies, we're moving forward in our third year of our History of Social Studies Adoption Plan. This work began following the new California History of Social Studies Framework and state approval of instructional materials back in 2017 and which occurred concurrently with our NGSS Adoption Plan that we successfully wrapped up this June. We currently have teams at all secondary schools participating in pilots, partnering with students, aligning with the Fair Act, and we will bring a recommendation for adoption to the board later this spring. Elementary piloting has also begun and their recommendation for adoption will be made next year, since much of their focus is currently on implementing a new approach to formative assessments. And these formative assessments are no small feat as we're building district-wide K6 use of an ELA in math diagnostic using a system called iReady. Here's why we're doing this. One, the best instruction, as many of our teachers know and do well, is instruction differentiated by student need. And that need is identified by timely formative data so that adjustments to instruction can be made, concepts can be re-taught, and learning can be accelerated. iReady provides that data and supplementary individualized curriculum. Second, we have made many great strides to build our district's multi-tiered system of support, also known as MTSS, to effectively activate our MTSS infrastructure and provide appropriate interventions to students based on their needs, from the classroom level to intensive personalized supports. MTSS requires ongoing and relevant data that iReady will provide us. And finally, and more urgently, as we manage and recover from distance learning, we will need to identify areas of learning loss and where to focus instruction. This tool will help with that work. In addition to renewing data sources for assessment, we are also revising how and what we assess. Distance learning required us to modify a variety of structures, processes, and practices to accommodate the virtual environment. And an important part of that work involved a revision of the elementary report cards to make grade reporting more relevant, manageable, and aligned with current teaching and learning experiences. Once again, we leverage the collective wisdom of action teams across the district to help with this work. We know that for success in distance learning, teachers focus their curricul- We know that for success in distance learning, teachers focus their curriculum and instruction on fewer and more targeted standards for depth of understanding rather than broad coverage of many standards. We believe that vertical alignment of standards by grid level bands will support continuity and help address learning loss. And we took initial steps to incorporate our graduate profile outcomes into our report card, not only because these skills are important during crisis, but because they are, these are the outcomes that matter to our community. Revisions like this, in addition to the many others we've made, are effective responses to our current circumstance, but we also know they are forward-thinking reforms that will benefit, benefit us in the long run. And as difficult as this year is, we also recognize the opportunities. We know that distance learning is incredibly difficult for our students, but they are resilient, will be stronger, and will have a skill set and perspective like no other generation before. And that outcome must apply to us as a school district and frankly, to public education at large. Here in DJUSD, we have universally adopted a learning management system, Canvas, which revolutionizes the way we organize and communicate curriculum. We have capacity for one-to-one technology. We revised secondary schedules for depth and focus. We've prioritized social emotional learning, and through all this work, have engendered solidarity as an organization like we haven't seen in a long time. Very importantly, with the postponement of state accountability systems and standardized tests, we have elevated the outcomes of our graduate profile because they matter the most to us as students, staff, parents, and community. We know the ability to think critically, innovate, collaborate, communicate, to adapt, and be resilient, and to be civically and culturally aware are what will lead to success now in college, career, and life. This year has provided us opportunities to build programs and align our structures and systems with our DJUSD graduate profile. We still have difficult work ahead of us. We are optimistic in that work, and we look forward to greater opportunities for our students in 2021 and beyond. And let me turn it back over to Dr. Boz.
Thank you, Dr. Boon Choi. That concludes the staff presentation for this evening, and we look forward to any questions, comments, and discussion with the board after public comment.
Excellent, okay, thank you all for that. So let's go ahead and move to public comment. And again, colleagues, we've agreed a three-minute limit for any comment, any individual comment, but that we will get, we will give the opportunity for all the comments to be read.
Okay. The first public comment comes from Daniel and Julie Klein. Please do not reopen schools until the virus is under control and the vaccine is widely available to students, teachers, and school staff. As difficult as this has been, as this has been, our student is in a routine with his teachers and classmates. Risking their health, students and teachers, as well as the health of the rest of our family and community is not worth the sacrifice our kids are currently making. DJUSD does not have the facilities or resources to support a safe return to school right now, and it would be a shame if a small group of loud activists put this entire community at risk because they are looking at private schools that do not have the facilities and resources to accomplish a safe return. UC Davis has not returned to business as usual, and that should be an indicator to the rest of us that our students do not belong in classrooms right now. Thank you, Daniel and Julie Klein, seventh grade parents, Holmes Junior High. Second comment. I am commenting for the upcoming board meeting on January 7th, 2021. I'm growing increasingly concerned that voices in favor of reopening schools, either using a hybrid model or in full person model, are drowning out the voices of sense and reason. It will be critical for the health of our community to stay the course and remain fully virtual teaching environment until the situation can be reassessed for the next academic year. This minimizes health risks for everyone and minimizes disruption to teaching and learning. I believe it will be a colossal mistake to reopen in any fashion. The best course will be to continue a fully virtual teaching environment for the remainder of the 2021 academic year. Thank you, Matt Bauer. The next comment. Dear DJUSD Board members, I understand there will be a meeting on January 7th to discuss the latest updates of the plan to return to campus. I strongly urge you to consider accelerating the schedule as long as the California and Yolo County allow schools to open. Number one, the students at DJUSD have been isolated at home for almost a year. As we have all heard, the downward physical and psychological risks of staying at home for extended period of time far outweigh the risk of getting exposed to COVID in the classroom. This is particularly the case for younger students whose overall development can be severely impacted. Number two, although some parents don't feel comfortable sending their children back to campus, please do not let those parents' opinions and unique situations stop other families from sending their children to school. Also, please understand that the Teachers Union does not necessarily represent teachers' opinions in a fair fashion. There are many teachers who are eager to return to actual classrooms to meet with their students. Number three, please be mindful of the unbearable burden on parents, especially those who have full-time demanding jobs if they have to care for their children every day. They also don't have the level of skill to supervise children as teachers do. For younger students, they require full-time supervision. Does DJUSD understand the challenges that these parents have been dealing with over the last ten months? Number four, it appears that vaccines will soon become available for all school teachers in California. Will DJUSD require teachers to be vaccinated? If certain teachers don't feel comfortable with vaccination, how will it impact the timeline and progress of reopening school campuses? Number five, can DJUSD and the Teachers Union be more transparent with parents about the progress and future plan on opening campuses? All email communications so far basically indicated that the progress is being made without any specifics. Why are the preparations taking so long? Why are other private schools in the area able to open their classrooms for in-person teaching? Number six, can DJUSD provide a specific timeline for opening school campuses? Best regards, Li King Wang.
And the next public comment reads, Superintendent Boz and the trustees of the Board of Education, we are the parents of a fifth grader at Pioneer Elementary and a sophomore at Davis High School. We previously submitted public comment in July and October urging the district to reopen the schools. That didn't happen. There has now been a groundswell of support for reopening schools at both the local and state levels. The overwhelming evidence supports the safe reopening of schools. The detrimental effects of the lockdown of schools will adversely impact the children in our community for months and possibly years. We can mitigate that damage by reopening schools at the earliest opportunity. AB-10 and the governor's plan demonstrate that the state's leaders recognize that in-person schooling is fundamental to a child's emotional and educational development. The Davis School District can get out in front of this issue and set a plan for reopening schools at the earliest opportunity. The interest of the children should be first and foremost in the minds of the leaders of the district. Every decision should be made with the primary and overriding goal of bringing our children back to school so that they can learn and thrive. Please act with the urgency that comes from your solemn responsibility to look out for the educational well-being of the children in the district. Thank you, Scott and Diane McElhern. And, sorry. The next comment reads, Hello, I would like to offer this comment for the discussion on return to in-person schooling. I am a mother of three children at Cesar Chavez Elementary. This time, the distance learning has been incredibly hard on my children and on me, having to rearrange my work life to be home and support my children. However, I would not change a thing. I am a physician and have seen the devastating effects of COVID-19 affecting my patients and staff. I have personally lost a close colleague to COVID and no staff who have lost family members. The surge we have seen since the holidays is really unfathomable with death rates climbing and hospitals running out of oxygen to offer even basic support to patients in respiratory distress. New strains of this virus are arising in England that are more virulent and likely to infect children at higher rates. Although my children are desperate to see their friends in person and I am desperate to return to my regular work schedule, it would not be worth the life of a teacher, staff member, or child. I can endure this as long as it is needed to ensure our incredible teachers and staff are safe when we do return and so that none of us as parents has to face the horror of the loss of a child. I am grateful that our school district has not rushed into returning to in-person schooling. As our state and country have seen, when rules on social distancing start to be lifted, communities don't continue to act in an appropriate manner, starting with Halloween activities promoted on or near school campuses to family get-togethers at Thanksgiving and Christmas despite a statewide shutdown. It is obvious to me that if schools are reopened, people will no longer be able to uphold the social distancing. Think of children eating together. It is impossible for them to remain masked and all six feet apart from each other. How often have you seen your child's mask fall down so the nose is no longer covered and then sneeze or cough? As parents, we know how hard it is for younger children to wear these masks correctly and to truly maintain six feet distance. For all of the challenges of distance learning, I do not want the district to feel pressured to return until the county public health offices feel it is 100% safe for all. Our school already knows the heartbreak of losing a teacher, and I don't want our children or school staff to have to experience that again this year. With a heavy heart, I thank you for your time and consideration. Cassie Diaz. Sorry.
I'll take it, Mercy.
Thank, I got it. The next is, dear board members, first of all, I would like to welcome the new members of the board. I would also like to thank all of the members of the board for their service to our school district. Your jobs have been made extremely difficult by the global pandemic. That said, I strongly urge you to consider the safety and welfare of our students and staff first and foremost, as you make the difficult decisions surrounding what our team, what our return to in-person instruction would look like. Staff members have not received communication stating that we will be vaccinated before we must return to school to teach in person. It is absolutely essential that staff members be vaccinated before the return to in-person instruction. Our county is currently in the purple tier of COVID-19 infection, and it is dangerous to expect teachers to teach in person without being vaccinated. Further, the state of California has published data which includes the number of cases of COVID-19 among people ages zero to seventeen. As of January 2021, there are over 290,000 cases of COVID-19 in people ages zero to seventeen in California. And there's a link posted. This number scares me. It is extremely stressful to see the number of cases that we are experiencing and to see that there is a push for us to reopen it in February. I am scared that when we go back to teaching in person, my family members will have a much higher chance of contracting the virus. I have twins who are eighteen months old. My parents, ages sixty-nine and seventy, help my husband and I care for the twins. I fear for the safety of my children, parents, spouse, and myself. I fear for the safety of my students and their families. I fear for the safety of my fellow CCE staff members. Last year, we had the terrible tragedy of losing our colleague Eva Dopego. We are at serious risk of losing more colleagues and even students to this virus. If we go back before, it is safe to do so. Despite these fears, I am excited about the connections I have made with my students this year. My students are learning from me and from each other, as well as from other teachers on our kindergarten team. Although we have had to learn online due to COVID-19, our students are resilient and staff members are working extremely hard to provide high-quality learning experiences for our students. Though staff have not been made aware of what type of hybrid learning model we will engage in when I return, I would like to advocate for a model in which we see a group, A group, an A group and a B group. A group would attend school half-day Monday and Thursday. B group would attend Tuesday and Friday. On Wednesdays, everyone would be online. This would accommodate families who do not wish to send their kids in person. Additionally, groups would not attend school on the same day as each other. This is extremely important to prevent the spread of the virus between the two groups. It would also allow custodial staff ample time to clean the school between the two groups.
Three minutes has ended.
Okay, our next public comment reads, Dear President DiNencio and other members of the Board of Education, we are parents of a first-grade student with special needs and a kindergarten student. Both of them are feeling now comfortable in their classrooms and with distance learning. Although the distance learning is taking a big toll on us parents, we would, we would therefore love to return to in-person classes. We have serious concerns regarding the plans for implementing a hybrid model, especially for elementary and special needs students. The hybrid model would disturb the kids' routines and will have serious negative effects on the social and emotional well-beings, not only of these children, but also of their teachers. One of the most important factors for these students to be successful is stability and routine, which is especially relevant for special needs children. A hybrid model would mean that not only the daily routine would be screwed up, but it would also mean the dynamics of the classroom will be negatively affected, e.g. by changing teachers and classmates. The workload for the students will also be increased. While the hybrid model might work better for older students, it will be detrimental for younger ones. In addition, the hybrid model for parents with more than one young kid in a different grade would be a logistical nightmare. We are both working at UC Davis Medical Center and are members of various COVID-19 committees, and therefore understand the importance of keeping the students and teachers safe. The current pandemic is alarming mainly due to the members of the community not respecting the basic health guidelines. Opening the school prematurely would risk the health and lives of students and teachers. We understand the school district is getting much pressure to reopen through constant complaints from certain parents. Everybody wants to go back to their normal lives. However, the well-beings of our kids and their teachers should have the top priority. We hope that the board and the school district will consider the welfare of our most vulnerable students. Sincerely, Dr. Lobna Rothenberg and Dr. Stefan Rothenberg. The next public comment is attached. Dear DJUSD Board of Education, we are both physicians and parents of two current and one future DJUSD early elementary students. These are our thoughts on various issues at hand. As we witness daily through the work and just looking around our communities, virtual school is an enormous economic and social emotional hardship for many families, and the social isolation is devastating for many children. We are not too worried about the kids' academic process or lack thereof in general, but we do worry about the steadily worsening achievement gap between kids with a lot of support at home and kids with.